This conference will now be
Can you stand for the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, united in a physical with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. 8:30 January 23rd, we're at Courthouse for that weekly superintendent meeting. We have a general conference, construction, and additions. Now, I don't accept the motion. Move to approve. Motion is our second.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All favors, aye?
Aye.
I move to approve the minutes of January 16th and the fines.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Sorry, aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mark?
Mike? Number three county attorney general discussion. I believe he's with us today. We'll find out number four, and Sheriff's up there.
Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of things. We had a water line break yesterday on the south end of the building in the basement. There isn't any damage, but of course it causes the fire alarms to go off, the water pressure drops. So Dave's on it. They're going to come today, they're going to temporarily repair it and then order some parts and then do it the right way. So just so you're up on that. And the construction boys are welding yesterday in the basement. A little bit of a small smoke pit fire, but a little bit of fire. So we had it all yesterday, so we should be good now. Fire alarms didn't go off at the building, you could smell. It's almost burned, so we checked when they were welding in the basement on some of their construction projects. So they're on it. I'm not concerned that they're not doing the right thing, it's just if it happens, you need to know about it. Other than that, I don't have anything. My truck's in for repairs after the deer hit. Be a couple of weeks before we have that back on the road, and then we should be good.
Was the water line associated with the H-back or nothing at all?
Uh, unrelated.
Okay.
Alright, that's fine to understand. Alright. Most of them, regular pipe, is that the only one? Sure could have been. Dave is our go-to guy on that. I was actually at a funeral when all this happened, so I haven't talked to Dave directly, so I have a lot of the details.
Okay.
This is what staff was telling me in my phone last night, so. And I haven't seen Dave today, so.
Okay.
I can shoot you guys emails and find out more if you're there. Okay. Sounds good, that's all I have on my shift. Thanks, Freddie.
Thank you.
Okay. Yep, have a good day.
Thanks. The carbon head discussion. Carbon head. Rachel, we've talked about the budget process, we've talked about the hard put money, and I don't recall if there will be some of that left over, and we talked about utilizing that. But we're going to make sure that that's included in a line item for what you need to do.
So, you know roughly how much will be left over?
Um, I'm just gonna...
I think I put in the budget like around $10,000, but we can adjust that.
I think it will be more than that.
Okay.
Yep.
How much more?
I think it would be closer to 50.
Okay.
But that's just a...
Well, I can update it and put that on the name.
Yep, that's just a possibility, I'm not really sure.
Yep.
Depends on what this last change order comes in at, but it shouldn't be significantly out of this world, so.
Okay. You're probably going to update that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we had something in there.
Sure.
County engineer update?
Nothing major, just kind of an update on some things. We had a, I think last week I told you, we had a motor grader needs repair, and the circle can't be repaired, so it's going to be about an $8,000 bill versus a $25,000 replacement. So we're good there. And then, I've been doing some light inquiries on truck chassis, just to get an idea of what prices have done in the past two to three years since we bought our last year. We investigated those other trucks from Boyer, they may not be what we're looking for, but I had the Mac dealer in yesterday, they were running around introducing their new salesman, and so kind of just inquired about what chassis are doing. Anything they order is probably 18 months out, so it's a budgeting nightmare to try to figure out when you're going to get them and when you got to pay for them. So, and then who knows if they're going to be putting any fees on top after you've ordered them. I know that's happened to a lot of people, they put surcharges on the trucks after you order them, and it's upside a lot of people, but you end up paying it anyway because you need the truck, so trying to avoid that mess. But we're just kind of narrowing some things down before we pull the trigger and putting some official quotes out there, so.
Does insurance cover any of that damage on that blade or not?
Um, it probably wouldn't be worth to turn it in on insurance based on, I don't know what our order deductibles are, and to me it's just a maintenance thing on the machine. I know it wasn't really more of a, I guess you could classify it as maybe an accident, but it was a slide off the road, the blade caught, and then damage happened. So we'll just pay for it out of secondary roads instead of claiming it on insurance. If it was something different where it was an actual physical accident with another vehicle, not our own, then we would probably look at it from that respect, but I think for now we're just going to handle it the way we handle it.
Okay, so.
Any update on Easy Go Riders, what they've done?
I haven't had any conversations with them since the last time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't had any conversation with Easy Riders at all as far as location. I know it's probably more difficult to be in St. Ansgry than it would be in Stacyville, and I know it's not their prime spot, but after talking to the foreman a little bit about room and everything else in St. Ansgry, it just might be a little bit more difficult to place something there. But I haven't had any other contact with them since we talked about it last, so.
I think Stacyville's, well, work, they were just more on a central...
Right, no, I get it. The other thing is Stacyville's right at the intersection of the trail, so I mean it's right there too.
Yeah.
But yeah, I haven't had any conversations with them. I don't know if they were supposed to contact me or whatever, and I think they were, I thought they were going to maybe do a little investigation on their own, or maybe I was supposed to, I guess I gotta, I'll figure that out, but I haven't heard anything.
I can contact Carl too, and screen where they're at.
Yeah, have them call me if you want.
Okay. Have you heard any more on that bridge moving?
No, I haven't gotten a chance to dig into that.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't sat down with those, that group at all to figure that out. I've been kind of trying to close projects, I worried more about that than other stats.
Yeah.
And they're interested in...
Yeah, yeah.
Some things to look at before we do that.
Alright, perfect. What about you?
And you?
Discussion on Healthy Harvest fiscal year 25 budget request.
Hi, good morning. I'm Andrea Folsizer with Healthy Harvest of North Iowa, and I'm the new executive director for the organization, just taking over from Marie Boyd in November 23. And Jackie Armstrong is here today too, she's a board member for Healthy Harvest. So we're here to update you on the activities that we've been doing for Healthy Harvest in our nine county region, which is what we cover, and also specifically related to what we're doing here in Mitchell County. So a lot of things have happened the last couple of years related to large statewide grants that we've been able to funnel some of the money from that into our region, and a very big part of that is having, you know, our contractors on the ground here in the counties to be able to bring that money to the area when it's available. So for Mitchell County specifically, we've done quite a bit of work with O.D. and Riceville School to help them to access some of the state funding through the local food for schools program. And I've just been working really closely recently also with Riceville Schools Nancy Eastman to help her with some technical support related to some, a larger farmer's school grant that she just submitted yesterday. So she's kind of looking forward to doing a lot more related to farmer's school, school gardening, connecting with local farm producers and things like that. But in summary, this year alone, we've been able to bring $32,000 in local food to the schools. This is, like I said, up from last year because the schools have been, you know, learning and being able to access how to use the food, those types of things, and the students are really enjoying the fresh local choices on their lunch menus, and we've been able to help do taste testing in some of the schools to get kids to, you know, recognize different raw vegetables or things like that that they may not always have access to. So that's been really exciting. We also, through that program, the local food for schools, and also through a secondary program called Local Food Purchasing Assistance Program, we've been purchasing a lot of local food from farms in Mitchell County. I found the number around $12,000 last year, and that's from different producers, and it's for, and that doesn't include maybe some direct purchases that are going directly from the farm to the schools or to the other institutions, it's just through this one program that's tracking the funding. So, and some of the food is staying here in Mitchell County, and some of it is being distributed elsewhere throughout the state, so through those programs. But we do a lot of other things related to food and food farming. We support local producers with doing different types of technical assistance for them. Sometimes it's like business assistance, sometimes marketing, sometimes networking between producers to kind of learn from each other. Farmers markets, I realized I failed to list all the farmers markets on your summary. If you look in the local food guide, there are actually four farmers markets listed from Mitchell County. We have Osage, Riceville, St. Andrew, and Stacyville are all listed, and we have had contractors in the summer visiting all those markets, doing local food demonstrations, and educating customers on how to use, you know, the things that are available in season at the farms. So that's a lot of what we do. The local food guide, this kind of is our customer-facing way of helping consumers to find where to purchase local food, so it has farms listed, it has businesses that purchase local, you know, so that they can connect wineries, breweries, and then all the farmers markets, times and dates. And so this is our, we call it the Grow, Eat, Play campaign. We have some federal grant funding to continue that campaign for two years, and the intention of it is just to get, you know, people to understand where their food comes from and how they can support the farms that are doing, you know, the food growing here in the state. So statewide, a lot of the same, or county or region-wide, sorry, in our nine counties, we do a lot of the same things that I just outlined for Mitchell County, but we also work on a statewide basis with a variety of regional and statewide groups to try and just know what's going on and help to bring those resources to North Iowa. So we were asking to continue our funding as it's been the last few years at $3,100. And we are aware, recently, I became aware that because we're a nonprofit, that we may need to have an agreement with the county in order to continue that sort of type of funding, and we have a draft or a sample agreement that we have had with Franklin County that could be used to, you know, make up a similar type of agreement with your county if you want to continue the funding for our organization. And Jackie has graciously agreed to help us out with, you know, working with the county attorney if that's necessary to, you know, form an agreement. We do a lot of services that I think you guys would find valuable in helping with food access and just general food and nutrition in your county, so.
Send that to Rachel, who could give the...
Sure, yeah. Do you guys have any questions about any of the projects or programs that we're working on?
I know last fall, a person from St. Ansgry asked me why St. Ansgry School wasn't involved in, so I don't know if I called...
Yes, I talked to you, yeah.
And then you told me that the school, you sent it to the superintendent, and then he passes it on to the food service director, and somewhere along there it kind of...
I believe it goes out, it goes out through the Department of Education, and so I think the food service directors also get it directly. But schools, like I said, it's a different method of purchasing food, and not all schools have the capacity to take that on. But we, like, between myself and we have another member of our team, Marie Moru, she's specifically focused on farmer's school procurement and education, and so we have both been through, in the last year, of course, helping to understand the procurement process for schools and how to better help the schools to, you know, be able to purchase from local producers and through food hubs and those, which food hubs are basically like just a distribution platform for local. So local producers can belong to a food hub, and then the food hub helps to distribute their products so that a school or a business grocery store or whatever doesn't have to purchase everything individually from each farm, they can purchase through the food hub, and the food hub does all the administration and delivery of the foods. So, but that's a little bit different than just buying from the, you know, the regular distributors. Some schools, it might take them a little longer to find, you know, if they have time or to invest in doing that, but that's part of what we do too, is to help those schools to connect as products or as funding becomes available. So I do have them on my radar. That funding has come, kind of, hasn't come up for renewal again, so, but if they, if it does, I do know that they're, that might be one to reach out to and see if there's some way that we can assist them to, you know, be able to apply for the funding next time.
Perfect. Yeah. They might have had a change of food directors too, but this is before that.
Yeah, and many of these funding sources have been renewed. We haven't heard that the local food for schools or the purchasing assistance will be renewed for a second time. Food for schools, it's been renewed once already, but the state, on a statewide level, just within Iowa, there is a bill being introduced that's going, is asking to extend the funding because these programs have shown to be very effective and important to communities, and the food hubs have demonstrated that they have the ability, and there is a food source in Iowa to be able to deliver more food than what we've been doing. So there is some lobbying going to be happening this year to try and ask the state to continue funding if the federal government does not extend those programs, so. So we are, you know, somewhat assisting with those types of efforts too on a statewide basis.
Where would people find your directory?
So we have, or we distribute them out in different places in the community, so usually libraries, chambers of commerce, the businesses that, you know, are listed in there, farmers' markets and stuff, stuff like that. And then if that, if you don't find a paper copy, I know I dropped a whole bunch off at Taste, so she may have a huge file in there because she's been a, she's worked with us on numerous Farmer's Pork dinners and things like that, and she's been supporting a lot of local producers. But also on our website, there's a searchable directory, you can print this directory, but there's a searchable directory that you can search by zip code or town or city and how far you're willing to travel, and then it will just bring up all your producers that are participating in the program and farmers' markets and all of those things.
You said, did you say it was seven counties?
Nine counties.
Nine counties total?
Yep.
So I was just curious where your funding sources are at, or is this funded? You said state grants in regards to helping with the schools, but nine counties fund this, you have other money that's coming in from the state, federal government, what other types of things?
Mm-hmm. So some, we do have a membership program for like community members and for farmers' producers, and we do accept donations and sponsorships as well, but we have a lot of grant funding, different types of grants. So we have, like the one I mentioned for Grow, Eat, Play, that's a federal Farmers Market Promotion Program grant. We have one from Newman's Own Foundation that funds our farmer's school work. We have two kind of state-administered grants that work on kitchen development for producer use for cooking glasses and stuff, so a lot of grants. I'd say 70% of our funding probably is project grant, or grants for specific project work.
So it's not just county money, it's money coming from the outside into these counties also for this?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Yeah.
Right.
Any other questions?
Like the 30 cents per capita, is that kind of the standard for the other counties?
Um, it varies. So that is a bit historic from before I started, and I tried to get, dig into a little bit where that exactly came from. I think that when we first started asking supervisors for funding, that's where we started. We have a couple of counties that are still funding at the 30 cents, and then it is, it kind of varies between that. We have, not every county in our region has funded us every year. We do ask every county, but it's up to each county whether they fund it. And I think it has a little bit to do with how active we are in each county. We try to prioritize where our board members and our team members live so that we have somebody like physically in each county. We don't always have that, but we do, especially with farmers' markets or farmer's school, we reach out to every, like, all the farmers' markets and try and do some work with each of them every year. The schools, we reach out to every school that participates in the LFS project as a priority, and then any other school that, even if they don't, they don't have to be in the LFS funding to get support from us, but we reach out to them, we don't always hear back from the schools. There's a lot going on at schools, and sometimes they just don't have time to add extra programming. So, yeah, we're happy to work with any school, any farmers' market in our nine counties that are, you know, that have time and want support, so we have people who can do that.
Paul? I'm good. Any questions?
Yeah, if I could just add to, one question and another statement. We in the board are really excited about the new leadership in your organization. Andrea is extraordinarily organized and competent and thorough, and so we just think that the leadership of the organization is soaring forward. Although we did a fine job, Andrea is an extraordinary person to be heading this, so we're really lucky. And the second thing that is a question, you said, Jim, that I should send a draft of a possible contract to Rachel, and I'd be glad to do that. Do you want me to send a copy to Aaron, or do you want me to talk to him to talk about what the contract should say? It's going to be pretty simple, basically HHNI is going to do all these nice services for the county, and the exchange are going to give us this money. I mean, it's going to be a simple contract, but how do you want me to work with you?
He should look at it, so I'm...
Send it to Aaron?
Both.
And Rachel.
Yeah, yeah. We should look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We haven't decided anything on our budgets yet, so that's why you won't have an answer for it, right? We're still in the budget process, so that's, we're just watching you walk away and wondering what...
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand that you guys are in your budgeting time, and that we'll hear when you're, yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. Thanks for the copy. Great. Discussion on possible action on Plan Eight, Partners' Proposal. Are they coming to speak to, or? Yeah, were they coming? No, they weren't going to be here. They basically sent us, they sent the board the information as far as the timeline and the, yeah, the NAP packet, and their proposal. So this, just as a review to the board, we're trying to fund our budget a little differently this year and use some, plug some of it through economic development in order to do that. The rural side of our rural basic is, we need some money in rural basic, and some of this is going to help that substantially. So what they're doing is, this would be a timeline in regards to what we need to do in order to do that. Some of these areas, all these areas need to be put in urban renewal area. There would be public hearings in regards to approving an urban renewal amendment. They will, they have already been figuring out the dollar amounts that we have on obligated TIF money for the fiscal years ahead. They're basically going to act as a financial planner, then help us through this process and to help us through this process. We gave the dollar amounts that are on, that they would be charging. The 2024 rate is $175 an hour, and mileage fees are on top of that. All of those are TIF-eligible expenses, so it was, it's not anything that the taxpayers are going to see on their property tax statements because those expenses would come out of the unobligated TIF revenue that's going to...
I would like to see a second opinion on this from a TIF attorney. I think John Daniels, I think he's the one that's, because I'm really excited and love to, heard about, if somebody don't like it, they can throw a lawsuit against you. Well, I don't want to be involved in that, that's why I just don't have a second opinion on how this all can be done. Say.
Okay, that's, I'm not saying I approve of that, but okay, I'll just acknowledge that.
Yep. Yep. That's my opinion.
Well, last week they had mentioned, or when they were here last time, that they were the TIF police, basically, so they're, they're not going to intentionally do something to get us in trouble. They've been doing this for a long time.
Yeah, exactly, and I'll just add to that a little bit. So they represent a number of counties and cities, this is their business, they're not going to do something that's going to ruin their business. They know what works and what doesn't work.
But you have to create a debt that you have no other way to pay it, and then to use that, so is that going to be the case, or are you going to be...
We're not creating any debt with this.
I know, that's what I mean, so I don't think it's...
I don't know how to answer you.
I know, that's why I'd like a second opinion on it, and just, the research, I don't know This is all culture, but maybe it is, but just like an opinion, legal opinion.
Well, if we wait a week, is that going to throw a multi-ranch in the thing, or?
We're on a crucial timeline here.
Yeah, we are.
In order to get that $500,000 that we did have to in December, right? We have to get this going back, and if we wait two more weeks for somebody to do that...
But do we need $500,000 right now? No.
Um, yeah, we have, yeah, we have areas that we can spend that money, that can utilize that money, yes.
Needs or wants?
Basically needs, because there's a couple of construction projects that departments want to build the type of buildings, conservation wants to roof their building, that could all come out of that $500,000 if this just go here. So there are things that always can be done.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Andrea, then?
Yeah.
So I, with the new House File 718, we have to mail out mailings, and we need those done by March 20th. So we have published 10 to 20 days prior to having our publication for the MAX 11. I'm asking all taxing authorities that have part of this of schools and cities to have it to be by March 5th. I'd like to have us do the same thing, I mean, all rules, just to give me a little extra time to make sure we have it done right. So just thinking of that too, we have to basically send it to the papers a week in advance for it to be in the papers, so just looking at the timeline, don't want to keep pushing this back too far. I agree.
Well, I'm comfortable at least, because it's a business, and it's not like we're their first client at all, so I move to approve the landscape partners proposal that we had in front of us. Yeah, motion is our second. I'll second that. Motion is second, is there any discussion?
Very settled, I just want to discuss.
You want a discussion, Rocco?
Uh, Rocco, Mark?
No.
Mike?
No.
Sidney?
Jim? Tom? Alright. Motion passed. So now, possible action on wellness contract?
That time of year. ISAC just sent us out the regular, the contract that we've done for the last 10 years, and the board has to approve to participate in wellness every year, so I'm coming to ask you to do that. This year, nothing's changed from last year, all the same expectations, starting February 1st, everyone that has their fit bid on gets $10,000 steps a day, gets a dollar, and we get scored on physicals and the online assessments that the employees do. We haven't had our first wellness meeting, but I have created a form that we'll talk about, we're going to set up a meeting to give the wellness, or the physical forms to the employees, and then we're going to put little, I'm proposing we put sheets on top of them when they go to the doctor... When they go to the doctor or whatever, they just fill out the sheet, give it to their wellness representative. And then in-house, we will track physicals as well to compare because last year we were short of getting our full 5% discount, which it ended up that our, our usages gave us discounts with ISAC for our insurance premium. So we were a zero increase for this coming year. But that's not going to possibly happen next year. So I'm proposing that we do like an in-house tracking. We're not going to ask them for any information except for their name, date of physical, so that at the end of the month that we get our report, we can go tick, 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 tick. Because there are some people that did it early to mid-year. It wasn't end-of-month rush. But when, with the HIPAA requirements, we really can't bug employees that we know that haven't done it. At the end, some of the people that looked odd that they hadn't done physicals, when we asked them, they had done them and did the credit for it. The employees were able to apply directly to the company that does our accidental plan, that extra coverage that they pay the premium, that we paid the premium, but they paid the $75. So the employees weren't out. Luckily, the county wasn't out on discount because of other discounts, but I don't want to see that happen again this year. So that's one thing, if that was a concern, I kind of have, trying to brainstorm an idea to prevent that from happening this year. So I'd like to ask for motion for the board to approve us participating in wellness.
Move to approve.
Motion, a second, any discussion?
So, so what do we turn these into? I mean, that Boston, the couple last year?
You would still take your form to the doctor. And then the doctor would hopefully send it in. They had bad fax numbers this year. So when you do this, you can give it to me or Lindsay. We're the two representatives that are in the courthouse.
Just give your, give what?
No, I'm just going to add this little form.
Oh, that one?
We don't need to see all the private information. We're not asking to see the physical forms. Just a tear sheet for the employee to turn in. And then in-house, we can keep track of who said they did it.
Here we go. Okay, yep.
Just because extra, extra knowledge is power.
Yes. And then also they can get the physical before they're...
Yes, we are on calendar year. So we're not the insurance that have paid, wait 366 days to get your physical.
I think some people are that.
And a lot of the clinics, when you call, they're used to that.
That's what I was told.
And I think Rachel put that in the memo too, to remind people that...
You just tell them when you call that it's per calendar year, not by what...
Not rolling years. Because a lot of people get turned back. And I know some of the roads guys, they don't want to get their DFT physicals too early, but once you do it, you're ahead of schedule. It's...
In a form, you can have your doctor put an A on all of that if you don't want the, on a form to turn it in.
Yeah, this is the...
It's accepted last year.
This is the form, and then when they want all the healthcare provider information, blood and everything, you can just have the doctor write an A. And that's totally acceptable. You don't have to turn in that information if you don't want. We tested the waters last year in Blue Farm, so.
So good.
Thank you.
All right, Rocco, Jim?
Hi.
Cindy?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Andrea, are you still a representative on this? For that? Yes.
I think items of no meaning to attend. I had a meeting to RPA Policy Board meeting, organizational meeting, where officers were elected and... And the highlight was a public hearing regarding fiscal year '24 RPA to TIP amendment. There's a Clear Lake project, has $300,000 of federal funds, so public hearing in regards to that. There's other things going on also, but I guess that's kind of the highlights of that. Then I had a Minnesota Water Conservation District meeting. Highlight to that is the plan this next year. There's two wetlands that are going to be going in and four waterways that are going to be happening. These, so there's a four-county soil fair that's going to be happening. That's in Floyd County this year. Fiscal year '25 will be, not fiscal year, calendar year '25 will be Mitchell County. So it's going to revolve around four counties. That soil, that soil fair will... Yesterday, I had an HVAC meeting. Our deck is progressing. And it's not as fast as we would all hope, but it, it's continually moving forward. Other than having fires in Facebook, I guess, it's small, you know. Like you're going to have, but it happened, so. Um, let's see here. When they do the dispatch room, you know, we talked about that change order. We approved that that's going to be able to have the, because that's one pool and one heat in that same room because of the odd circumstances of that room. They figured there'd be about a one-day shutdown just for that room, but then they'll provide fresh air and food. So things should be okay in there. It's, it might not be perfect for them that day, but...
They'll have to wait for a longer day, apparently, huh?
Well, I'm not sure what their plan is for when they're going to do it. The, that, they're, they're thinking of, you know, they're going to keep people comfortable the best they can, but they're going to have to be a one-day shutdown in order to change your ground. There's an ITC, Instruction to Contractor M6, that's going to be, that's getting generated. That's the exit lights that we talked about. We went over that yesterday and kind of figured out what we want for the different locations. Then there will be a change order coming our way based on that ITC, the change order number nine. And, uh... And that's pretty much it. So, that's what I have.
I have a landfill meeting and a macro meeting for all the budgets, market officials and all that stuff.
I did a meeting, okay. I just had Heartland Insurance, Judy was here. We had a meeting with all the departments, or... They want to have a three-time theater for safety meeting. I think everybody's all the department has them here, so it was a pretty good turnout.
I had a FMC decap meeting. There's a whole lot on there. I was through financials, went over all contracts. Basically, most of you have heard that the government is re-aligning a lot of stuff. And so it's just kind of a month-to-month thing if we're going to downsize these groups and committees or not. So just sit and wait. I had a Mitchell County Economic Development meeting. Went through the finances, expenses. Jenny, the directors report. Welcome new members of the year. We elected our officers and committees. Basically, all stayed in the same time of the meeting. Went over the '24, '25 budget. And then we had a guest. Jim came and discussed a little project, trail, paving trail project that he would like to see connecting Osage, St. Anzler. A lot of that will be real close to the Cedar River and the biking trails and hiking trails, so.
That's a, that's a green mill trail?
No, this would be like head north out of Mitchell on Red Ball. And then around the Sportsman's. And then where that development area is, I forget what that's called. Sleeping Hill. To, up to that T intersection. And then if you want a mile, you could hook onto the St. Anzler Blacktop to the west. Or there's also talked about going east to, I believe that's Red Ball. Then that would take to behind the school. And so in the early stages, but I think that would be, I, I personally think it'd be pretty nice connecting trails from Osage to St. Anzler. It'll be long, after I'm gone, it'd be nice of St. Anzler to pass through McIntyre up to the Watsi, to the Watsi Trail. So, and so just an idea at this time, but you have to start with an idea before you get a plan. And you have to continually improve the county. That's, that's, so it's just an idea. If the people in Mitchell County want to do it, then they have to let themselves be known that they want to do a project like that, so.
I've had a number of people ask me about APV trails. You know, they seem to be the hot thing nowadays. Everybody's got one. They all places to ride on trails.
Yeah.
A lot of the bike trails is, I don't see one of them on trails ever, but... But, you know, that's comments I've had from people.
But you know, Mike, you saying that, so last year, I believe it was the county seat had a ride.
APV, right?
Yeah, all on roads.
And they had a lot of big trails.
There was, I think, over 200. They had to, after like two stops, they had to start separate, you know, 20 would leave and then they have something. And so they were using the roads. They were, you know, the UTVs and...
Yep.
So it went over very well.
I think they're doing it again this year.
I think.
It's anyone now.
Yeah. Since it's had such a good turnout, yeah.
So there's a local four-wheeler club that is in support of this project. We're starting to get the word out and to see if anybody wants it. And if they're, if they're one of the ones that are on the list for it, so.
Yeah, and I guess that's all I had. Unless I have any questions.
First of, quick of court report for December. We have a total of $2,115.26.
And there's one for first class, $2,952 for an immediate street to McIntyre.
All right, okay. Any public comments?